Buenas tardes, a todos. Esta es la reunión del 27 de febrero del Comité Económico de la Comunidad, y ese comité se dirigirá a orden. Son 2:08 PM. Soy Tammy Morales, presidenta del comité, y estoy acompañada por miembros del consejo: Lewis, Herbald y Sawan. Antes de empezar, aprobaremos nuestra agenda para nuestra reunión del comité. Si no hay objeciones a la agenda de hoy, será adoptada. Sin objeciones, la agenda de hoy es adoptada. En este momento, no tenemos comentarios públicos. Está bien, muy bien, continuaremos. Tenemos tres temas en nuestra agenda hoy. El primer tema es la programación de Annabelle Backman como miembro de la Comisión LGTBI de Seattle. Lakeisha, ¿por favor, lees el tema de la empresa en el registro?
Programación de Annabelle Backman como miembro de la Comisión LGTBI de Seattle durante el mandato de abril de 2020. Briefing, discusión y posible voto.
Genial. Ms. Backman, si quieren, ¿quieres venir? ¿Quieres hacer una breve introducción y empezar?
Eso suena genial, gracias. Annabelle Backman es ingeniera de software especializada en la identidad digital y seguridad. Ha visto cómo los pequeños cambios y decisiones pueden introducir efectos significativos inintencionados y impactar diferentes comunidades. Trae estas habilidades a las diversas organizaciones en las que participa, entre ellas, los demócratas del distrito 43, donde es presidente del Comité de Tecnología. Ha intentado aprovechar su privilegio para defender soluciones equitativas a problemas difíciles que incluyen y apoyan a las personas LGBT, personas de color, indígenas, personas con discapacidad y todos los demás. Annabelle trae perspectiva y experiencia a la Comisión LGTBI, y está emocionada de ayudar a guiar a Seattle hacia políticas y programas que funcionen para todos.
Gracias.
Gracias, miembros del consejo. Continuaremos. Brieftly, me parece que la pregunta más importante y más prescindente es: ¿Por qué estoy aquí y por qué debería estar aquí? En gran parte, creo que la respuesta es porque puedo serlo. Porque soy lo suficientemente afortunado para ser uno de los que tiene el tiempo y recursos y capacidad energética para participar y aparecer y estar involucrado en programas como este. Desafortunadamente, muchas de las personas a las que más necesitamos escuchar no tienen eso. Como dije, soy lo suficientemente privilegiado para haber pasado por la vida de tal manera que estoy en un lugar donde tengo eso, a pesar de tener que lidiar con el hecho de que estamos en una sociedad transphobia, una sociedad homofóbica, una sociedad ablesta. Mi esperanza es que, ya sabes, desde que tengo esa capacidad, puedo aprovecharla y usarla para conseguir las voces de otras personas en la mesa. Eso es lo que espero hacer aquí. Espero poder trabajar con todos ustedes para asegurar que sus voces están siendo escuchadas, sus historias están siendo escuchadas y sus caras están siendo vistas.
Gracias. Voy a comenzar. Gracias por tu solicitud y por estar dispuesto a servir a la comunidad. Pero me gustaría saber de ti un poco cómo aprendiste sobre esta Comisión en particular. Como concejal de Derechos Humanos, yo mismo sé que es una oportunidad interesante. Así que me encantaría saber qué te llevó a esta posición y esta decisión.
Claro, gracias. En ese punto, tomaré la oportunidad de agradecer al ex presidente y actual concejal, Jesse Murray, por traer esta oportunidad a mi atención. Ella y yo... recientemente se renunció del ejecutivo del Distrito Demócrata 43, pero nos servimos al mismo tiempo. Ella mencionó en una de nuestras reuniones que la Comisión tenía muchos asientos abiertos y que estaba buscando llenarlos. Y le pregunté después y ella dio un gran sonido en su cara y dijo: "Estoy tan feliz de que estés en la Comisión". Así que agradezco a ella por traer la oportunidad a mi atención e invitándome a aplicar y ver si puedo ayudar.
Genial. ¿Alguna pregunta para Ms. Backman?
Gracias por tu disposición a servir. Tú has sido altamente recomendado por la propia Comisión. Y gracias al presidente por estar dispuesto a presentar una programación de programación de apoyo de mi tiempo como presidente del comité con el alcance aquí. Y realmente estoy contenta de patrocinar tu tiempo con la Comisión.
Gracias, miembro del consejo.
Genial. Bueno, en ese caso... sé que hay algo oficial que debe pasar aquí. Así que voy a mover que el comité recomienda la confirmación de la programación 01508. Genial. A los que están de favor de la recomendación, confirmen la programación 01508. Voto aí. No hay programaciones. El motion carries y la programación 01508 será enviada al comité de la Cámara del Mar 9 de septiembre. Y ustedes son welcome para unirse a nosotros en esa reunión si quieren, pero no se requiere estar allí.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Felicitaciones.
Gracias.
En este primer paso. Genial, gracias. Bien, nuestro segundo tema se relaciona con el proyecto Memorial de Aids. Lakeisha, ¿por favor, lees eso en el registro?
Un ordenamiento...
Perdón. Si los presentadores quieren venir, eso sería genial.
Un ordenamiento relacionado con fondos de donación de fuentes non-ciudadanas. Autorizando al director de la Oficina de Artes y Cultura para aceptar una donación especificada y ejecutar, entregar y cumplir los acuerdos correspondientes y en nombre de la ciudad. Amendando el ordenamiento 12600, que adoptó el presupuesto de 2020, cambiando apropiaciones a la Oficina de Artes y Cultura y ratificando y confirmando ciertos actos anteriores.
Hola. ¿Quieren ir adelante y presentarse y comenzar?
Claro. Mi nombre es Rosette Royale y soy el consultor de la historia para el camino memorial de Aids.
Buenas tardes. Soy Calandra Childers. Soy la directora adjunta de esta Oficina de Artes y Cultura.
Hola, soy Jason Plourd. Soy el gerente de proyecto para el camino memorial de Aids.
Alors, gracias por estar aquí. Estoy en el personal central del consejo.
Gracias. Vaya.
Genial. Creo que voy a empezar aquí y dar un poco de una visión general del proyecto. Estoy muy contenta de estar aquí para hablar de esta asociación que ha estado en desarrollo durante años. En 2016, la ciudad adoptó un presupuesto que tenía un elemento límite de 75,000 dólares que ayudaría a un grupo de planificación para reunirse en torno al legado de Aids y el Memorial. Y a través de ese elemento límite, trabajamos con consultores privados. Trabajamos con el Museo de Historia y Industria y un número de otros miembros de la comunidad para definir el alcance, el ubicación, el propósito cívico y el timeline de este proyecto. Se unió un grupo de asesoría de la comunidad y trabajamos con ellos para identificar un sitio. Ese sitio es el extremo norte de Cal Anderson Park y la plaza pública en la estación Light Rail de Capitol Hill. Y comenzamos una relación con el desarrollador, quien ha sido un participante alegre en el proyecto. A través de una asignación adicional en financiación de la ciudad en 2018, la Oficina de Artes y Cultura y los parques de Seattle y recreación fueron capaces de dedicar financiación al proyecto Memorial de Aids, el Plan de Arte Master. Comisionamos al artista Horatio Law para desarrollar un plan de arte para todo el proyecto en general que abarca tanto propiedad pública como privada. Ese plan fue financiado tanto a través de financiación de la ciudad como a través del financiamiento privado del grupo independiente. Y luego, como continuación de ese plan, hemos sido capaces de comisionar artistas para desarrollar obras de arte que van a la propiedad en concordancia con el Plan de Arte Master. Hoy estamos aquí para buscar su aprobación para aceptar fondos que han sido levados privadamente a la ciudad para que podamos hacer la fabricación y instalación de esas obras de arte y aceptar esas obras de arte en la colección cívica de la ciudad. Y creo que esto es una asociación bastante única. No es una que hemos entrado antes. Pero creo que es un ejemplo muy genial de ser realmente responsables de los miembros de la comunidad que se han presentado y que dicen: "Esto es realmente importante para nosotros y cómo priorizamos hacer esto suceder". Y luego, esa comunidad haciendo bastante financiamiento independiente que podemos aprovechar como ciudad. Te voy a pasar a ti, Jason.
Bien. Daré una visión general del proyecto. Sé que algunos de ustedes han tenido esta información antes, pero esto será una rápida revisión. Aquí vamos. Como mencionó Calandra, el proyecto se debe completar en este año, 2020. Y el ubicación está sobre la estación Light Rail de Capitol Hill y en el borde norte de Cal Anderson Park. Han pasado varios años, o unos años, que el comité ha trabajado juntos. Tenemos a nuestro comité de liderazgo aquí en la audiencia hoy, Michelle Hassan, nuestra presidenta, y Jeff Sakuma aquí para animarnos. Así que el comité que se formó hizo una búsqueda del ubicación adecuada y esta es la área que resultó en funcionar. Y estar en el corazón de Capitol Hill fue genial porque proporciona una profunda conexión cultural y histórica, porque este vecindario tiene una historia de ser un centro para la comunidad LGBT, pero también fue el locus de la epidemia de Aids de King County. Lo siento. Aquí vamos. La AMP desarrolló tres objetivos y el financiamiento fue colaborativo por gobierno y donaciones privadas. Los tres objetivos son crear un lugar físico para reflexión y recordación, utilizar tecnología para compartir historias sobre la epidemia y proporcionar un llamado a acción para terminar la estigma de HIV y el discriminación. Uno de los componentes... hablaremos más sobre los ubicaciones físicas, pero también quería mencionar que el objetivo de la colección de historias ha estado por más de dos años ahora y Rosette ha estado liderando esos esfuerzos para recolectar grabaciones de personas en la comunidad en torno a sus experiencias con HIV y Aids y también desarrollando una imagen de la historia que experimentamos en esta región. Esas historias van a ser compartidas online a través de nuestro sitio web, pero también serán compartidas a través de algún componente digital para la AMP también, un componente de realidad aumentada que estamos trabajando, para que la gente tenga acceso a esas historias a través de una variedad de medios. ¿Podemos ir al video ahora? Bien, hablemos de eso. De hecho, dejemos a Rosette hablar un poco sobre la parte de la colección de historias y podemos compartir algo de eso.
Claro. Así que he estado trabajando con la AMP durante dos años aproximadamente ahora. Y mi trabajo realmente tiene dos fases, puedes pensar. La primera fase fue financiada por un préstamo del Departamento de las Comunidades para el préstamo de fondo de encajada, y eso era para recolectar historias de personas negras y blancas que hablaban de HIV y Aids y cómo afectaron sus vidas en la región. Así que terminé hablando con alrededor de 25, 26 individuos, obtuve 60 horas o así de material realmente moviendo, compelling, rompiendo con el corazón y levantando el corazón sobre HIV y Aids en la región. Fue realmente un trabajo hermoso. Y ahora estamos pasando a la segunda fase y todavía vamos a estar trabajando con las comunidades negras y blancas, pero también alcanzando a las comunidades inmigrantes y las comunidades ASL, las comunidades trans, así como ayudando a reframar la narrativa blanca hablando con mujeres blancas sobre cómo HIV y Aids afectaron sus vidas, lesbianas trabajando con hombres queer durante los primeros días de la epidemia. Así que realmente lanzando un marco amplio. Pensaré en ello como una gran tapisada amplia de todas las distintas voces dando a nosotros esta hermosa historia, una historia movida y verdadera sobre HIV y Aids en la región. Así que esa es una parte del camino memorial de Aids. Así que he hablado con mucha gente y vamos a mostrar tres minutos o así
Fantástico. Seguro que lo reproduciremos y el debate en el panel después.
Genial. Sí, es realmente... ha sido un trabajo fantástico y ha sido maravilloso trabajar con personas en la ciudad y tener apoyo para un proyecto como este. Creo que cuando digo a la gente que sucede, a menudo... creo que la mitad de la gente está sorprendida cuando digo: "¿En serio? Estás recibiendo dinero de la ciudad? Es tan genial hacer un proyecto como ese". Y creo que saber que la ciudad apoya algo que ayuda a elevar las voces de todas las personas y algo que estará alrededor y tendrá permanencia en la ciudad es realmente importante para muchas personas que sufre tan a menudo la desaparición y tienen que lidiar con estigma en un nivel diario. Así que ha sido genial.
Y no solo el estigma. Quiero decir, el hecho de que la gente sigue sanándose.
Sí.
Eso fue lo que realmente me aparecía en la presentación que pude ver es que no se trata solo de lo que sucedió, sino de lo que la gente todavía vive hoy. Y es por eso que creo que es tan importante incorporar esas historias en este trabajo físico de arte. Creo que realmente trae eso a la casa a la gente cuando están experimentando el arte físico.
Sí, que no es solo el pasado, sino también nuestro presente. Y también nos pregunta cómo lidiaremos con nuestro futuro juntos como personas.
¿Te gustaría hablar solo, Jason, y podemos volver?
Sí, podemos hacer eso. Joey.
¿Deberíamos volver al PowerPoint?
Sí, iba a volver al PowerPoint.
Está bien.
Está bien. Entonces podemos intentar mostrar esto después. ¿Sabes cuál es?
No ahora.
Pero aseguraremos de compartirlo con todos para que puedan verlo después.
Eso sería genial. Gracias.
Tenemos un enlace a esto en nuestro canal de YouTube que podemos compartir también.
Puedes ir ahora si quieres.
Oh, seguro.
Ver el video y luego volver.
Bien. Ash está aprobando un poco.
Bien. En términos de la forma en que esto funcionará en el programa de arte público, lo que este proyecto de ley 119739 permitirá a la ciudad es aceptar casi 750,000 dólares del AMP y su patrocinador fiscal, que es la Fundación de Seattle Parks. Y así esos fondos están siendo divididos en lo que eventualmente se ejecuta a través de tres contratos para los artistas que han sido elegidos para instalar el arte este año. Y así, tres artistas son Christopher Jordan, quien planea diseñar el arte centerpiece, de lo que estoy seguro que todos ustedes tienen más detalle sobre, una práctica de diseño llamada Civilization, que diseñará obras de arte que conecten las diferentes áreas de la instalación. Y luego, finalmente, un contrato de 340,000 dólares para diseñar obras de arte para la torre de ventanas que está en la plaza y que irá a Horatio Hongyan Law. En términos de... ¿Quieres hacer el plan de arte master?
Puedo si quieres.
Sí, por favor.
Fue una gran, realmente gran resumen. Muchas gracias. Lo que estás refiriendo es todo listo en el plan de arte master que fue desarrollado en 2018 y fue completado en 2019. Que establece el ubicación física del AMP y dónde van a ir las piezas. Solo como nota, el presupuesto total para todo el proyecto es 2.9 millones. Ha levantado más de 2.4 millones por ahora. Los aspectos de la AMP, hay tres segmentos principales del proyecto centrados en la recordación y reflexión, celebrando la creatividad y la vida y honrando la coraje y la resiliencia de la comunidad. Y hay diferentes obras de arte conectadas a esos aspectos. Este es un really recent y también un gran visión general del proyecto. El arte de la AMP, habrá cuatro zonas artísticas distintas a través de este espacio. El arte centerpiece, que fue mencionado por Christopher Paul Jordan. Las obras de conexión, que puedes ver en el centro y a la izquierda, la parte superior aquí. Diseñado por Civilization. El arte de la sala de comunidad, que estará en un espacio privado en el Capitol Hill Housing Building, pero visible a la calle John Street porque la sala tiene todas las ventanas en el lado de la calle. Y luego, los artículos de calanderson Park, que estarán en el extremo noreste de Cal Anderson Park aquí. Puedes ver tres estaciones diferentes que se propuso y recientemente se pasó por el PAC, el Comité de Asesoría de Arte Pública. Esas tres piezas ahí. Así que la AMP ha hecho mucho trabajo con la Oficina de Artes y Cultura para seleccionar a estos artistas, para iniciar las comisiones y para pasar por la fase de diseño, lo que es por lo que ahora estamos listos para que la ciudad tome el control con la fabricación e instalación y eventualmente aceptar en la colección.
Y Jason, si no te preocupa que me introduzca, solo para aclarar la sala de comunidad no es una que entrará en la colección de la ciudad porque está en un espacio privado. Y así realmente estuvimos enfocados en los que son públicamente accesibles para el programa de arte público.
Exacto. Como mencioné, estábamos al final de la fase de diseño para muchos de estos objetos. El más lejos, el primero comisionado y el más lejos es el arte centerpiece. Y esta es una imagen de ese arte centerpiece desarrollado por Christopher Paul Jordan. Hay un poco de declaración artística aquí. La pieza realmente no va a entrar en demasiado detalle aquí, pero forman X, pero básicamente es un signo positivo en su lado. En algunos sentidos, eso es para disipar esta dicotomía de HIV positivo y negativo como siendo separado y realmente darse cuenta de que una vez que una persona está infectada con HIV y Aids, todos somos. Todos tenemos que lidiar con esta epidemia. Y el símbolo X tiene muchos significados para el amor, para el despedazo, un símbolo del desconocido, cosas explícitas que no se supone que debemos hablar en público. La escultura está realmente hablando de galvanizar la acción continua y se refiere a espacios que han experimentado nuestra reunión y conexiones a través del tiempo. Y como un joven artista negro, la declaración termina con la nota de que en un país donde el 50% de los hombres homosexuales negros se proyecta para convertirse en HIV positivo en su vida, los oradores nos llaman a la conexión, hospitalidad, cuidado, celebración, recordación, activismo y apoyo. Y eso es una visión. Puedes ver un poco de otros objetos que han sido sugeridos para la plaza aquí también, las piezas de conexión, que están usando señales de protesta como una conexión explícita a la historia de HIV y Aids. Y luego esta diapositiva aquí solo para mostrar que hemos estado haciendo mucho trabajo a lo largo de los últimos años para involucrar a múltiples artistas. Teníamos obras temporales el año pasado que, de nuevo, hicimos en colaboración con la Oficina de Artes y Cultura para que pudieramos involucrar al área y diferentes comunidades y usando diferentes formas de arte en lugar de solo, ya sabes, arte sculptural, arte público. Pero había algunos elementos de diseño gráfico aquí. Había elementos de performance, performances de danza que fueron usados a través de la área para realmente conectar con la gente y dejar que sepan sobre la AMP.
Gracias. Tengo tantas más preguntas. Así que como alguien que está en el Consejo de Salud, solo esa última estadística de que el 50% de los hombres homosexuales anticipan convertirse en HIV positivo es algo que se siente que es preventible. Así que esto sería una parte importante de ayudarnos a entender ese mensaje de que hay trabajo que hacer para asegurar que la salud de la gente también sea protegida.
Sí, y esa es una de las cosas que los obras de arte están haciendo, no solo como como mencionó el consejo Herbald, hablando de cosas que han ocurrido en el pasado, sino manteniendo una presencia visible y recordando a la gente que HIV sigue con nosotros y las cosas que la gente puede hacer para detenerlo y protegerse. Así que es muy mucho un llamado a acción, simplemente estar allí, tener una presencia visible en nuestra ciudad, lo que es por lo que creo que es tan importante para nosotros hacer.
Miembro del consejo, Sawan.
Gracias por tu presentación hoy y también por haber estado en tus anteriores presentaciones, creo que en el consejo de Herbald el año pasado. Una pregunta que tuve fue: ¿Cuánto ves el proyecto Memorial de Aids? Obviamente, conecta con el actual...
Solo estudiando el video.
Está haciendo el sonido en el video.
Ya terminaré preguntándole una pregunta y luego podemos... Así que, obviamente, como todos ustedes correctamente dijeron y como señaló el presidente Morales, el Memorial de Aids no es solo un memorial, sino también sobre el conflicto actual que nuestros miembros de la comunidad están experimentando y que conecta con el día actual también. Cuánto... solo expandir un poco, ¿cuánto crees que esto también conectará con la pensamiento de la gente sobre los necesidades de atención médica general experimentadas por la comunidad LGTBI? Sabes, especialmente hoy, lo más prominente es la necesidad de atención médica de la comunidad trans y el acceso a medicamentos y procedimientos que son accesibles. Y, ya sabes, hay un conflicto en tantos niveles para lograr eso. Y cómo se relaciona con la necesidad de Medicare for All porque algo como Medicare for All especialmente beneficia a la comunidad trans y la comunidad LGTBI. ¿Ves esto surgiendo en tus conversaciones también?
No sé específicamente si estaremos tratando cuestiones como esa. Creo que definitivamente hay una asociación entre esas cuestiones, como hablar de las realidades que la gente está enfrentando con HIV hoy que Rosette está trayendo en los videos que están creando. Sé que está haciendo mucho de la redacción a específicas comunidades para asegurar que las voces sean escuchadas y que múltiples perspectivas sean incluidas. Uno de los componentes de la AMP es trabajar con una延展 realidad aumentada. Y realmente siento que ese es un gran componente al trabajo físico que permite que la gente acceda más información. Así que con su teléfono móvil, puede tener una experiencia interactiva con el trabajo físico, pero luego podría haber un enlace a descubrir más a través de uno de los socios de recursos que tenemos. Así que definitivamente hay muchas conexiones a eso, aunque no hemos hablado explícitamente de avanzar en ninguna agenda política a través del Memorial.
Pero creo que puedo decir que tenemos una lista de unos 30 personas y medio que estamos a punto de acercar para hacer más entrevistas para esta segunda fase. Y estaba hablando con alguien hace un par de horas, una mujer trans negra que ha hecho décadas de trabajo en torno a HIV y Aids en la región. Y así, estábamos hablando de atención médica y de lo que significa para las comunidades trans tener acceso a atención médica completa y qué sería eso y cómo ha sido un impedimento para tantas personas como ella y su vida y personas que parecen ella. Así que... y ella es una de las personas con las que estoy pensando en tener una buena charla para esta segunda fase, así que puedo imaginar que esas cosas surgirán. Así que, ya sabes, cuando... creo que lo que ha pasado hasta ahora es que a veces una idea puede ser hablada por alguien más, pero luego cuando me siento con alguien frente a una cámara, empiezan a hablar y simplemente sale de nuevo. Así que tengo una sensación de que esto ya está en el aire y que va a ser voicado por ciertas personas incluso sin que yo nos preguntes una pregunta explícita sobre ello.
¿Quieres intentar el video nuevamente?
Creo que funcionó.
Estaba con un novio, un llamado novio, eventualmente se volvió sexual. Después del hecho, él entonces me dijo: "Oh, por cierto". Dije: "Sí". Él dice: "Lo tengo". Dije: "¿Tengo qué?" Él dice: "Lo tengo". Estaba como: "¿Qué es lo "es"? Sabes, ¡duh! Y él dice: "Tengo Aids". Dije: "Aids"? Él dijo: "Sí". "Supongo que tengo medicamentos, pero no tomo ningún medicamento". Dije: "Pero por qué no me lo dijiste antes". Él dijo: "Ya pensé que lo tenías". Dije: "¿Por qué crees que ya lo tengo? ¿Porque vivo en mi coche"? Él dijo: "No, todos lo tienen".
Tengo que reintroducirme a mí mismo y a mi mismo y a la gente. Estoy bien con ir a comprar mis medicamentos. Estoy bien con dejar a mi trabajo saber: "Hey, esto es lo que está pasando". Pero estoy bien... como... he estado bien con declarar como "estoy positivo".
En la comunidad negra, la iglesia es ella. Eso es el coro, eso es el lugar donde las personas tradicionalmente y históricamente han ido a buscar refugio y cuidado y apoyo. Pero para las personas que vivían con HIV, muriendo de Aids, ni siquiera podían ir a la iglesia, ni la iglesia les llegara.
No pudieron levantarse y anunciar públicamente que tenían HIV o que tenían Aids porque serían aún más ostracizados. Y la gente murió de vergüenza. Podrían haber vivido, pero murieron de vergüenza.
Puedes vivir con HIV. Ya no es una amenaza de muerte más. Tienes que amarte a ti mismo para hacer lo que necesitas hacer. You have to love yourself, though, in order to do what you need to do, how you need to show other people where they can go. I've been helped by so many different people since I've been HIV-positive that there were things that they helped me with I didn't even know I could get. So, I'm really kind of glad. I keep telling people, "The Lord let me have HIV so that I could help somebody else along the way."
And I do want to mention that I know this wasn't captioned here, but everything, all the content that we put on our website and our YouTube channel are captioned, so that if folks need to watch this again, they can.
Thank you. That was powerful. Thank you. Can I ask about some of the other pieces that are in here that you, so there's, going back to the monolith Serpentine Lambda, these are part of it also, right?
Yes.
That's a piece that's, yeah, been put forward by Horatio La.
Can you talk a little bit about what these look like? Like, how big are they? What are they, what do the symbols mean? Yeah.
Yeah. So, like I said, these are just, were just approved, so I don't have a lot of that information in the PowerPoint. But the concept of those park pieces, one of the main inspirations is a poem through a compilation of poems around HIV and AIDS that refer to when a friend of theirs died, it was like the sky cracked and pieces of the sky fell down to the ground. And so, he's using that as an analogy with these large glass pieces that have fallen into Call Anderson Park. One of the shapes is a singular shard that's a monolith, that's about eight to nine feet tall, about 24 inches wide, and then four to six inches deep. The second piece is what is kind of described there as a serpentine shape, and it's really three fragments that are just kind of lying on their side in the park. And then the third one is a lambda shape, and it's these two pieces that are, that have been broken apart but are actually supporting each other, holding each other up. So, there's symbolism there, of course, but then the lambda in particular is a symbol that had been used for the gay community for many years. It's about a catalyst for change, making positive change. And there's other references to that shape as well. It's actually a Chinese character for person. And so, there's a lot of different meanings around that. Those are all, the length of them are all about that same eight foot by 24 feet wide, four to six inches thick in each of those components. And the intent is to have them illuminated from the inside so that they're sort of a glowing presence as well.
So, this looks very exciting. I do have a question, though. The, sorry, I'm trying to find my notes. We have funding coming to the city to pay for the fabrication and installation. We don't see anything about the maintenance of these pieces. So, can you talk a little bit about what the anticipated operating costs are for, or maintenance costs would be for how long? I know there's expected legislation coming, or contribution coming for that, but we don't have any details.
Right, right. Thank you. Yeah, so whenever the city accepts an artwork as a gift, we also look for maintenance funds because we're responsible for maintaining these works in the long term. And generally, what we look to is approximately 30-year lifespan of something living out in the public. And we're looking at anything from, you know, what might erode because of weather, to something that might be tagged frequently, to any other sort of materiality that might need to be replaced that we're just familiar with because we maintain other artworks. So, we have an arts conservator on staff, and she's taken a look at these specific artworks and sort of done a projection over the next 30 years of kind of what it will take for us to be able to make sure that these artworks will stay looking good in the public space. So, we've estimated $400,000 for the set of three over the, over a period of 30 years. And so, we have an agreement with the AMP and the Parks Foundation. That money is part of that section that is still to be fundraised, and so that is why we're not bringing it forward in the legislation at this time, but we are anticipating it by the end of the year.
By the end of this year?
By the end of this year, yes.
So, given that, I think what I'm going to propose is that we amend this to wait until we have a little more detail on that so that we can be clear about what the parameters are around that and when that funding will come in. Is there, does anybody have questions about that piece of it, the operating costs for the maintenance?
So, the idea would be that we would not vote on the ordinance that would accept the funds?
So, I would make a motion to amend this to accept the donation but proviso the execution of contracts until we have more information about that. Shall I just read the amendment?
Yeah, I would feel much more comfortable with that approach as opposed to that would delay acting on the legislation to accept the funds.
So, let me read my proposed amendment, and then we can have a conversation about that. So, I would move to amend Council Bill 119739 to accept the donation but proviso execution of contracts pending inclusion of provisions regarding the cost overruns, potential cost overruns, donation of funding for ongoing conservation activities, or other issues council members may be interested in. I'll give you a minute to think about that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember, could I just note one thing? So, the, you're correct in that we would accept the donation and the proviso, the execution of the contracts. I just note, I would, it would be lovely if I could run that language by the Law Department and then have it added in when this goes to full council, so we'd make the amendment there, just because I don't have the language in front of me.
Okay.
If that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, including language, like, or other issues council members might be interested in, makes it a proviso that might be impossible to respond.
Subject to a lot of things. Yeah, okay.
I can draft that language and circulate it to you all by tomorrow.
Okay, so we will do that. So, I will withdraw that motion.
I'm supportive in principle.
Okay.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
If we were to develop the, a contract with the Seattle Foundation that just outlined the expectations, would that meet the needs that you're laying forward?
I would think so. I mean, we just don't have the information right now about what the costs are, what the expectation is for when that funding would come in, and what the plan is for maintaining these. I mean, we've got public art all over the city, so we know that that is a real thing, maintaining that. We just want to make sure that we understand exactly how that would happen. So, if you're able to do that, I think that would probably address the issue.
Great, thank you.
Just a clarifying question. Are you seeing that as a different amendment, an amendment that just basically says, "These are the commitments that will be in the contract"?
An amendment to the current contract?
No, would it be just a different amendment to the ordinance from what the chair is proposing, and that that amendment would just simply say, "These are the agreements that we have with these other entities, and those agreements will be reflected in the contract in the future"? Is that basically what you're talking about?
If that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I might just propose something. If it would be, if it is feasible for you to get the council members that information between now and next week, then it may not even require an amendment. If you're satisfied with the information that comes in, so we could just pass the bill out of full council.
Incorporate it in that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we will be in touch with you soon.
Sounds good.
Fantastic.
Okay. In that case, we will just move to passing the bill. Okay, sorry, I'm just reading, reading the notes. So, I move then that the committee recommend passage of Council Bill 119739.
Second?
Thank you. Those in favor of the recommendation, vote by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so the motion carries, and Council Bill 119739 will be forwarded to the March 9th City Council meeting. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're looking forward to seeing all of this in Call Anderson Park. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay, our final item of business today is a presentation by OED. Lakisha, will you please read that into the record?
OED's Workforce Development Investments in Program: Briefing and Discussion.
Hello there. Hope y'all come on up. How's everybody doing today?
Hey. Good day.
Welcome. So, if we could do a quick round of introductions and then get started, that'd be great. Thank you.
Bobby Lee, Director, OED.
Matt Houghton, Workforce Advisor.
Good afternoon, I'm Nancy Yamamoto. I'm the Workforce Development Director at OED.
Hi, Sasha Gorbich, the Youth Employment Advisor.
I'm Sarah Shearer, and I'm the Manufacturing and Maritime Advocate.
Great, thank you. Go for it.
Okay. As I understand it, thanks for allowing us to be here. This is really exciting. As I understand it, you wanted a overall, sort of overview of our program as well as the manufacturing and maritime, some insight into that particular industry. Is that right?
Sure, so we have the work that you do on, around workforce development. We know that in our industrial lands, there are some, lots of conversations happening and really interested in understanding how we can support young people in our city, but also just folks in general who are unemployed or underemployed and getting better access to these kinds of programs.
Great. The thesis that we are trying to address is that the economy is evolving in a way where, on average, it looks good, the economy is booming, but when you look at the data and break it down by race, geography, and education level especially, and there are other indicators you can look at, then you'll see that as the overall economy is booming, actually poverty is also going up at the same time, particularly for underserved communities. And so, the paradox, if you will, where you have this binary economy, where you have growth but poverty growing at the same time, is the paradox that we're trying to solve at OED. And a big chunk of the effort around trying to address that is through small business technical assistance, especially those who are owned by people of color and immigrant population, key industry strategies, workforce development, and neighborhood economic development. And you were at one of the events on the neighborhood economic development yesterday. Today's focus really is around workforce development, but they all collectively serve to address this growing paradox that we're trying to address. So, the, as the economy has evolved over time, and if you look at our grandparents and what the economy that they were part of, which is production and manufacturing economy, we have really evolved into a knowledge economy, especially here in Seattle. And in the knowledge economy, as many of you know, you, it really requires a lot more education if you want to thrive in that, in that sector. And so, over time, if you were to compare from 2001 to 2019, you can see how demand for a college degree has really escalated over time as the economy is evolving. And on the, if you look at the population growth here in the last 10 years in Seattle, which is, was about 20%, the, many of the folks coming in are knowledge workers with college degrees. And so, that contributes to this binary economy that I talked about before. And the, if you break it down by race, then you can see how in the eight years after high school graduation, in terms of attainment of higher education, when you look at that by race, you can see how the attainment looks like based on race. So, as the economy is moving more and more towards knowledge-based economy, we, by race, you can see how the attainment level between different groups are being, over time, is evolving, and that's contributing to this binary economy. And the next slide, this is, this came out of, you know, a few months after I arrived here in Seattle, I believe, on the Seattle Times, actually. They did this comparison, and it's just really astounding how in one city you can have such discrepancy, the income disparity based on race. 105 and 100,000 a year versus for African-Americans, 4,500 a year. I mean, that is just tremendous income disparity that Seattle is facing. And we predict that actually that disparity, unfortunately, will only grow. And there's a variety of theories as to how and why. We won't get into that too much today because we're focused on workforce development, but our concern is that this paradox will only become more exacerbated over time. So, we changed our mission at OED, and our focus was really on inclusive economy. We believe that this is, this binary economy is contributing to social ills, and we need to put all of our resources supporting those that are being left out as the economy is evolving. And what's interesting on, if you look at the basic facts, I won't go into all the details here, education certainly plays a role, but people of color are being left out is the bottom line when you look at demographic as unemployed population. And so, in summary, the health of our economy on average looks really just remarkably positive, but underneath it all, we have some serious challenges ahead of us. With that, I'll turn it over to Nancy. Do you want to?
Oh, I think you have the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Changing any kind of these slides.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Sure, go ahead.
I always feel like language can be really powerful in being able to describe our challenges. And I think we should think about, different language about our economy.
Yeah.
So, that we can say something else besides our economy is growing or booming, or something that's accurate, that paints a picture, because we don't have that language right now. And if we don't have that language, then we don't have a way to express the problem in a way that everybody can wrap their arms around and then get in a position where we're problem-solving around a common. It's really, it's, you know, the fact that there is this perception that a growing economy means an economy that everybody's benefiting from is...
Right.
So, it's great that you're saying we want an inclusive economy, but what do we want to, what do we call the kind of economy we have right now?
Yeah.
It, yeah. Not inclusive? Yeah. Councilmember someone?
Good point, thank you.
I was gonna say, we call it capitalism.
Oh, nice.
Which, which basically describes exactly what you're saying, this concept that, this assumption that we have that growing is better.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, and certainly in the case of climate catastrophe, I think that is very much called a question.
Yeah, I do think this perspective that we have to constantly be growing, we just know that that is not sustainable.
That's right.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Oh, no, no problem. You said it correctly. Just to, it's sort of related to the concern that Councilmember Herbald expressed, to sort of our, the parameters in the framework itself decides what perspective we're putting forward. So, a couple of points. One is, and this is related to actual data, I mean, I don't disagree with you about the slide you have where, and I don't know where you have this from, but I'm presuming it's correct, data, the 2001 jobs, the number of jobs that required a college degree and the ones that did not compared to current time.
No.
I do think, though, that we have to go beyond something like this to also recognize that across the board, younger people, the people who are in, you know, seeking jobs now or have just entered the job force, you know exactly where I'm getting at, are paid less for the same work. And I think that needs to be drawn out separate from the fact that, yes, if you are a tech worker at Amazon or Google, yes, you're getting paid really good wages, but that describes a very, very small proportion of our young people. And certainly, we are also facing this problem where you have data only for Seattle, and a lot of working-class people have been pushed out of Seattle, so it doesn't even reflect the actual problem in some ways, and that's not your fault, it's just artifact of the data. So many poor people have been, lower-income people have been pushed out into the wider region. But I do think that it's still true, even within Seattle, that even if you have a college degree, you are actually having a low-wage job, and you're saddled with student debt and so overall, and that, this is the historical anomaly, right? I mean, unfortunately, the way the capitalist economy is going, the younger generation now, as you know, is the first generation in America's history, which is going to be... as you know, is the first generation in America's history, which is going to be, overall, worse off than the previous generations. I feel like that should be reflected as well.
Okay.
And then one thing can I say, and I know that this might sound, I mean, I'm not sure myself whether we should do anything about this or not, but I do feel sometimes that it actually doesn't help the cause of having an inclusive economy if we characterize manufacturing jobs as not knowledge-based, you know, because I really do think that, as a lot of people have been saying more recently, low-paid jobs, I mean, the jobs that are called low-skilled, they're not low-skilled, they're low-paid. Because, yes, there's obviously a skill differential, and we're not trying to pretend that all work is the same, requires the same kind of intellectual challenges and all of that, but there are other kinds of challenges. I mean, when you talk to retail workers at Macy's, for example, yeah, they're not writing code for software, but it is challenging nonetheless because it presents other kinds of challenges, the amount of patience you have to have, the amount of physical stamina you have to have to be on your feet all day, you know, challenging, sort of having a level emotional whatever response regardless of what interactions you have. All of that, you know, service sector workers, when you're waiting tables, I just want to make sure that we don't unwittingly have sort of a lower sort of...
Viewpoints.
Viewpoints about them.
Thank you very much.
As a former waitress and bra-sizer at a department store, I can tell you, that is not easy work. Sorry. Continue.
We agree with all of you saying. Do you want to?
Should I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to talk about our workforce development programs, and hopefully, our presentation will answer some of your questions and address some of the issues that you raised today. So what we wanted to do today is to give you an overview of our workforce development program. We, there is a team of three, myself, Matt Houghton is our Workforce Development Advisor, and Sasha Gorovich is our Youth Employment Advisor. We do a lot of work that is really focused on connecting our residents, particularly low-income and underrepresented residents, to our economy. And so we think about economy in a neutral way, it's really about where is the labor market demand, and how can we make sure that our residents are connected to family-wage jobs in our community. So as part of our work, we do a lot of partnership with OED's key industry teams where we do focus on sectors. Sarah Shearer is one of our staff members on the team. We also do a lot of work with our regional partners, as well as our city partners, and doing a lot of work coordinating effort across the city, and we'll go into a little bit more around those details. So when we think about our workforce priorities for 2020, we really think about it in two different categories. One is really centered around youth, and the other is centered around adults. For our youth portfolio, our objective is to make sure that young people in the city have what we call a window into our economy, so that they understand where the opportunities are and how their educational experience is relevant to those jobs. And Sasha will talk a little bit more about the strategies in those areas. In the adult space, we're really focused on continuing to invest in education and training for communities that are particularly underrepresented in our economy, excuse me, and who need additional skills and training to be able to connect to our economy, particularly in those key sectors where there is a growing demand, as well as an opportunity for family-wage jobs. These priorities include investments in organizations like the Ingersoll Gender Center, Port Jobs, Seattle Jobs Initiative, that support job seekers. We also have partnerships with the Seattle Colleges to improve access and completion rates amongst our low-wage working adults. And then thirdly, we do a lot of work with business and labor around joint training strategies. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sasha to talk a little bit more about our youth employment strategies.
Thanks. So as Nancy mentioned, our youth strategy is really focused on what we call career-connected learning, which is to provide more opportunities for young people to access career experiences that really range from exposure, meeting people who look like them, informational interviews, networking, job shadows, internships, all the way up to apprenticeships and entering the labor market. We know that most young people are exposed to the jobs that they see around them, their families, their teachers, but we really want to make sure that all young people have the opportunities and the information and the access to explore the careers that interest them, and so they know how to prepare for it. They know what classes to take, what after-school activities to pursue, and what their education pathway might look like. It might not be college for everyone. So in 2019, we launched our first-ever career-connected learning grant. I presented, we did a racial equity toolkit on the grants a couple months ago, and this strategy really came out of that toolkit. We, OED used to run a massive internship program, but we heard from communities and from young people that they're on a spectrum of readiness. Some of them are not ready for internships or don't know what internship they want to pursue yet, and they need more exposure or practice talking to professionals. And similarly, a lot of our employers are kind of on the same path. Not all of them are ready to host interns, not all of them are ready to host young people, and so we look at this as a way to work with employers too, and to build up their readiness to start taking on young people. So in 2019, we funded about, we funded nine organizations, two projects at Seattle Public Schools, one at the Seattle Colleges, and the rest at our partners like REWA and Vietnamese Friendship Association, Computing for All, Goodwill. We're expecting to serve about 700 young people through that. We don't have all of the data yet on who we're serving, there are projects spanned from the last summer, and then some are aligned to the school year, so we can get back to you on the final numbers, but we believe it'll be about 700. We, priority for our grants are to serve youth of color, low-income youth, immigrants and refugees, opportunity youth, youth experiencing homelessness, and LGBTQ youth. And one thing I really wanted to mention about these grants is that through that racial equity toolkit and talking to the providers and young people, what was really great about it is that the activities were proposed by communities. So instead of the city saying, here are some activities that make sense for you, they really worked with their local employers, their young people, and proposed activities that made sense from them. So, and that was evident in the proposals we received, they really spanned the spectrum of what would work for the young people, and so it really fit their needs of what those young people were experiencing at the moment. We're also partnering with the mayor's office, Deal, and the Seattle Colleges to support the Seattle Promise students' connect-to-summer internship opportunities. OED, as I've mentioned in the past, has done a lot of work with internships, so we're formally partnering with the colleges this year to expand that opportunity.
Sasha, can you talk about how and whether these internships are paid?
Yes, so they're all paid. The Seattle Promise Jobs and Career Pathway internships are paid by the employer.
Okay.
So they're at the minimum wage that the employer is paying, and then through our grant program, some of them applied for stipend or wages, or they use additional funding to cover that.
Okay, good.
And for this program, is this external to the city opportunities, or is this to...
This is external to the city.
External to the city. And can you just, like, how many employers are participating?
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. I think last year, we had seven to 10 employers.
And how many students?
This year, the goal is 50.
Students, okay. Yeah, I mean, if they're, I know that the Office of Economic Development has put time and effort in trying to cultivate those employer opportunities. Can you just talk a little bit about how you see that work happening and moving forward? I know you touched upon it above, and the workforce priorities, that it is a priority to increase more participation, but...
Yeah, so I can touch on it on the next slide, actually. So there's a couple different ways that we engage with employers, and one of them I really want to mention before I forget is that we don't necessarily are providing it, but we partner and fund some of the organizations that are providing equity training for employers so that they're really ready to host young people and people that might not traditionally work in their pathways. So that's really important to us, is to only, to really cultivate and work with employers who are ready. So we partner with our key industries team to work with those employers, and then we're investing in different sector-based organizations who have the relationships with those employer communities, so they can do some of the employer recruitment and employer training on behalf of that. So, when I was going to touch on, we're partnering with our Friends at Arts for a cultural and creative internship program. We're funding Northwest Folklife, who's doing our employer recruitment, employer training, and cohort building for the young people and placing young people at internships.
And I remember that the Small Business Advisory Council was also tasked with identifying things that the city could do to help employers take more interns, and just, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, so small businesses and nonprofits are an area that we really love to place young people at, because they provide a lot of those small experiences where young people can get a lot of hands-on work. But we, with small businesses, we know that the cost is hard and the time it takes, you know, it's not just the cost of hiring an intern, but somebody who's supervising and coming up with those tasks. And so some of our partners fundraised to cover the wages for small businesses and nonprofits to increase that. And what I heard from the small business survey that we did to hear that was that internships are a little bit harder for small businesses, they're really looking for full-time employment, and so we're trying to come up with some strategies and work with them when they do have that need, is connect them to the training providers who are training in that specific area.
And I think that's really key, is connecting them with the folks who are doing the training to create the pipeline. I think I'm the last council member on the council now who participated in the visit to Hamburg, and every employer, even sole-source employers, use interns.
Yeah.
And it's just part of what they do, because they all see it as useful, regardless of what sector they're in, it's useful to create that job readiness.
Yeah.
They see it in their own best interests.
Yeah, absolutely, and so we try to partner with small businesses in other ways too, like job shadows or tours, so that young people know that that's an option for them when they're ready, whether it's working for that small business, or maybe one day starting their own small business. We really want to expose them to that and, you know, work with the employers who say, this might not be my talent tomorrow or in a year, but it might be in five years.
Yeah, Bobby.
Yeah, that's right. The national statistics, and you hit it right on nail, is that 67% of interns actually end up becoming full-time workers for their boss, and so it really is a pipeline strategy. And some people find that statistics to be surprising, but that's a national figure that we use to justify our investments in internships. The second part is a broader strategic question that is, that we really need to be intentional about, and that is now in the Seattle Public School System, the minorities are the majorities now. And so in a workplace environment, we really have to make it inclusive, otherwise that experience can also backfire. And so we want to be much more intentional about working with employers to make sure that the workplace environment is culturally acceptable and appropriate. So that's a big part of our priority. The second thing is, and this is a broader strategy, is if we don't find a way for the future emerging workforce, which are more diverse, to become part of middle class, then we won't have an economy. So we have a big macro issue that we are trying to address with a little bit of money that Sasha's running with, but at a broader level, that's the issue for me at OED.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to turn to you, Matt, for the adult workforce portfolio.
Before we go to adult, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. So there's a bunch of folks in South Park who are working with the port on developing sort of, I wouldn't call it, I guess, it's not a skill center, it's more an alternative school, much like aviation school, but specifically for the maritime industry. And it looks like this thing is moving, and what can OED do to help in that endeavor?
You're getting Sarah really excited now. She spent all night trying to answer that question. Do you mind if we just finish up Nancy's part?
Of course.
And then because Sarah will be talking about that.
Yeah.
We're going to dive deep into one sector, and that will be one of them, so. Before we get there, so there's a lot of, my name's Matt Houghton, so, and Sasha's kind of part of this, in that I work with adults, and there's a considerable overlap at times, but maybe it's good to think about the main differences, that adults don't have the time necessary to explore careers, right? Time is their enemy of the poor, and they need as little training as they can to become relevant in the labor market. We like to think of that as an on-ramp to a career, right? What is the least amount a person can learn to be valuable to an employer in a growth industry? And that's kind of our overall strategy, is building those on-ramps into growth industries. And that requires, you know, partnerships with both the employer to make sure they have wraparound services, and that the training they get is relevant to the employer. So if I could dive down, I think, is there, oh, we don't...
Do you want to go to this one?
Yeah, I love that picture. Just to show you, this is one of the programs, that's Grow Higher, which is a program we're working on with Seattle Jobs Initiative right now in partnership with Swedish. The first three cohorts were just for Swedish, and what this looks like is 60 participants have gone through this so far. Most of these people, this is their first job in the country, and they're all getting, they go through a four-week training intensive, and they get jobs at entry level in the hospitals, mostly it's Swedish right now, though the last cohort, well, let me back up, so all of these, almost all these individuals get employed right out the door, and then they're represented. So they're part, they become part of the SCIU Healthcare Training Fund. The issue is, they're not, they're represented, but they don't become eligible for a year. So we are currently working with the Training Fund to research what happens during that year and how we can increase retention until they are actually represented, or until they can actually get those benefits. But this last cohort, which was just yesterday, was awesome, full class, and there we had children's and Kaiser too, because they were like, we want in on that action, right? Because these are individuals who otherwise wouldn't have been able to navigate how to get the job, who you talk to, how you do the digital application, and we kind of package all that for them. So we're really looking forward to growing this further and operationalizing it for the, with the employers.
Grow Higher?
It's called Grow Higher, yeah.
This slide, Matt?
Do they, go back to the, thank you.
And it's focused on healthcare, this particular...
That's the sector. So we typically, you know, we, you know, old workforce development was about just getting somebody a job and saying, see you later. We want to make sure that if they get into a job, it's part of a growth career, that's going to get them benefits, that's going to have them get a living wage. So it's a lot harder to do. And what's made that more difficult is that, you know, as Seattle becomes more and more exclusive, all the people who could afford to leave have. And so a number of the people that we end up working with are even more barrier than they were before. This is at a time when education is more and more expensive, so there's a lot of things working against us to try to get the people the skills they need so that they can be active participants, right? So another project I want to mention were the Ironworkers Pre-Aprenticeship. So Seattle Jobs Initiative actually does recruitment and wraparound for pre-apprentices who are interested in becoming ironworkers, and this is a partnership with the Ironworkers Union. So these are individuals who, we've run now 30 individuals who've gone through the pre-apprenticeship, and then they are getting trained at North Seattle College's new apprenticeship training program. Those are individuals who are typically more barrier than an average pre-apprentice, but their, our success rate is higher, by about 7% than an average pre-apprentice. So the ironworkers are really psyched about that. They're running a cohort every month out of North Seattle College, so that's pretty exciting.
What's that one called?
That's the Ironworkers Pre-Aprenticeship. And then another one I wanted to mention was that it's a growing partnership we have going on with the Millionaires Club, and again, this is, so in that, if you're familiar with the Millionaires Club, so there it's a drop-in millu, those are homeless individuals who, you know, their first job is usually in-house, helping just clean up and serve food, their next job would be day labor, and that's about as far as their services have gone historically. So they're working with our partner, Seattle Jobs Initiative, to think about what is the career path after day labor, right? It's kind of, they're calling it like a stage-three, a stage-three career path, right? Like, what's that next step so they can actually start working? And there's a, I could, there's a number of other programs we're working in, but I wanted to mention, given the limited time too, is that we also do things around program support. So we're, I think Bobby was mentioning the changing economy, we didn't get to talk too much about the next economy, what happens when 5G happens and the network economy takes place. Right now, digital literacy is already a basic skill, right? We, it's not just about math and what you can read or write. If you don't have digital literacy, you're not going to succeed. And so we're, we've started a partnership with Seattle Public Libraries, the WorkSource System, DSHS, the Immigrant Affairs, let's see, and then DOIT, yeah, David Keyes at DOIT with their Digital Equity Group. And what we're trying to do is figure out a way to standardize a digital literacy assessment, oh, and the Seattle Colleges is there as well. What would a digital literacy assessment look like? What would a digital literacy assessment look like that's standardized, that helps make sure that we get the person to the right level of intervention to help them increase their literacy? So it would be a pre-post assessment. It's a very tactical, you know, outcome that we're looking for. But really, the intent there is to start understanding each other's operations. These are all drop-in milieus that operate in each of these organizations. And we want to, over time, have more of a collective effort to make sure people are getting the right level of service. So I could go on. There's a lot of other programs, but I'll just leave it at that right now.
Well, so I don't know if you're the right person or not, but when we're talking about pre-apprenticeship programs in particular, one thing that we've talked a lot about in our office, and I don't know how to make this happen, but, you know, we talked about Hamburg and in European countries where this is just part of the culture, having this kind of entry through, starting with younger people. So we have a Running Start Program in the city, for example. So how do we take that model and help people connect who are juniors or seniors in high school into a pre-apprenticeship program and create this expectation that if you start to think that maybe college is not going to be your path, you have another option to start thinking about sooner so that there's something interesting and, you know, future-looking for you? So anyway, that's something that we're.
Absolutely. And one thing to consider in Europe is that, you know, another difference is that between 60 and 7% of their public education system is funded by the private sector. Okay, so we don't have that level of influence here. I mean, and so that was built in their culture 200 years ago. And so, you know, we're always trying to leverage public-private training partnerships. And I could send you some research we did on that to try to figure out what is that sweet spot to make that happen where there's a tipping point between the payoff for the private sector. Like they don't have to do as much recruitment and they get higher retention rates with, you know, quality students or trainees who are trained up in the public sector. But that, it's, we've never really gotten that to a huge scale. We're starting, so Grow Hire is an example. We're going to, our goal is to operationalize that so that the hospital is actually the one paying for that service, right? They're getting there.
It would be good also to maybe focus on industries that most likely would be drawing talent from places outside of Seattle. If you focus on this model, on the industries that aren't necessarily hiring people from here, but that we have a lot of people moving here to take.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that would be, I think, very useful in dealing with some of the macro issues that Director Lee identified about our economy. We have a lot of people who are ready to earn high-wage jobs moving to the city, pushing out people who are not ready for those jobs. So we're going to focus on those industries that are doing, that are drawing those employees.
Yeah. I mean, healthcare is great that way. I mean, the CEO of Swedish and the CEO of Kaiser both have said, you know, we need to make sure the community is part of our workforce. They're actually stepping up. But you're right. I mean, generally, when people say we want jobs and then there's a policy around that and job creation happens, all those jobs go from out-of-state people because there's no training dollars to make sure the people who live here get the skills they need. That's the missing ingredient. If there's not an investment made in the skill development, you're not going to get the people who live here. It's not just about job creation. You're right.
I think Sasha wanted to say something about the.
On the youth front, two pieces. One, one of our grants that we funded this year was to the Seattle Colleges and they were doing what we call Tri-Trade Events. And the last one was at Georgetown, South Seattle College. And about, I think it was about 80 young people went to visit all the skilled trades. And the feedback from that was, wow, I had no idea I didn't have to go to college or I didn't know I could do this. I want to do more of this. So we do try to expose young people to the opportunities that they have in both the youth apprenticeships, pre-apprenticeships, and then full-time apprenticeships. And then the second piece is the state just passed the Career Connect Washington Initiative that we're now aligning our grants to. And the last piece in that continuum ladder is called Career Launch. And it's mimicking apprenticeships. It's aligned classroom training, on-the-job work experience, employer partners articulated from high school to college credit. And so there's a big push in the region for more programs like that across the sectors, not just skilled trades. And like I said, when we release our grants in 2020, we'll also use the same language and encourage that. We funded automated technician youth apprenticeships at Seattle Public Schools this year.
I would love to talk with you about how to make sure that the young people in our D2 high schools know about these opportunities.
Definitely.
And we do want to talk a little bit more about our sector work to touch on Councilmember Herbold's point. But before we do that, I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about our efforts to build regional alignment around workforce development. And so in addition to our direct program investments, we also coordinate with other regional stakeholders, including King County, the Port of Seattle, the Workforce Development Council, and the Local Workforce Investment Board around strategies to create a stronger, more responsive system so that we are better aligned to the needs of job seekers with employers and so that we can address systemic equity gaps in our who receives and benefits from services. So this has been a multi-year effort that centered really around four goals. One is establishing a strong regional workforce development vision and plan. We're embarking on that work this year. I think it goes to Councilmember Herbold's point around communication and how we talk about workforce development. I think we oftentimes talk about it in a deficit-based way, which is really not the way to engage both the people that we want to support as well as employers. Secondly, we're working to create a strong backbone entity to coordinate regional effort and address systemic needs that are required in the system. That includes needs around common data and performance measures, braiding funds and program alignment so that we can scale and improve workforce services that are received by our residents. The third is to ensure that community has an ongoing leadership role and a voice in the design and implementation of workforce development strategies that also provides real-time feedback on performance. So rather than a one-time engagement, really thinking about the structures for ongoing participation and leadership in the system. And then finally, creating and coordinating industry that includes business and labor around participating into the workforce development system. So turning to, I want to spend a little bit more time talking about the healthcare sector because it has been such an important focal point for us and for this regional partnership, which established a healthcare industry leadership table this past year. And the purpose of that was to have leaders in the industry coalesce around joint action. So one of the needs that they identified was the gap in knowledge for young people in our community around the opportunity for healthcare careers. And there was, it was called a Chart Your Path to Healthcare Career Event, where over 450 middle and high school students attended. They were able to talk to healthcare practitioners in the field and also learn about the education and career pathways that are available to help them meet their goals. And there was such excitement and interest in this that we've been asked to host two more events.
That's great.
The healthcare leadership table also provides a forum for sharing and replicating best practices. So one example around an apprenticeship motto is the Kaiser Permanente Medical Assistant Apprenticeship Program that launched last year, which provides apprenticeships with the opportunity to earn and learn at the same time. And that lowers barriers for access for those who are unable to participate in traditional training pathways. So the goal for this year is to identify two additional leadership tables. We haven't yet identified what sectors those will be in. We do know that we want to make sure that there is a strong commitment to hiring locally and that there is a good pathway to family-wage jobs. So we also develop and implement strategies to prepare individuals in key sectors. So there are certain key sectors in our community that are important to our region, both in terms of our continued economic growth as well as along history and identity that's tied to the region. And most importantly, create opportunities for family-wage jobs. And each of these sectors are supported by OED staff member as part of our key industry teams. And because workforce development is such an issue across all these sectors, we partner very closely with them in developing workforce development strategies. So the first sector is the creative and network economy. I don't know, Bobby, if you want to say anything there. We kind of went through your slides.
Yeah, it's anticipating with the modernization of the telecommunications system, it's anticipating that AI and other automation will continue to play a bigger role. So we're targeting sectors that allows people to thrive in that economy without being replaced by machines. And so that is one sector that we're focused on.
Yeah. And so some of the strategies that are being developed there are the creative economy, youth pilots that we are launching with arts, as well as the digital skills assessment partnership that we are forming with Seattle Public Libraries and our Department of Information Technology. Another area where we have a focus is in technology and media. We do have a staff person there who is very much focused on impact hiring and how to diversify that industry. And we are also looking at how the technological advances in transportation and electrification will have workforce implications and how we could start building a workforce that'll be ready to take advantage of those occupations. And then finally, we have our industrial and maritime sectors, which Sarah is here to talk about. We have already made an investment in the Youth Maritime Collaborative to provide youth with more exposure into occupations and career options in that sector and are also doing some work with the Seattle Public Schools around that. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk more about the industrial and maritime sector.
Sarah's new actually to OED. Could you just give a highlight of your background just that members of the council know your background a little bit?
Sure. So I have been in the maritime industry for 30 some odd years and have everything from sail ships to work in safety to doing quality management, risk management, all kinds of different things. In my last job, for the last four years, I was the dean and director of the Seattle Maritime Academy. So I worked with Seattle Colleges, creating pathways. In fact, I actually started the Youth Maritime Collaborative with the support and collaboration of the Port of Seattle.
Thank you.
We wanted to give you a little bit of a deep dive into one of our key industries, which is manufacturing and maritime. Just one of the things that you guys have talked about and that we find is that people just don't know that these industries exist and that there's fantastic living wage jobs that have low barriers to entry. So a little bit, this is just from Soto. And from distilleries that are making single malt whiskeys to solstice, which is cannabis. In Soto alone, there are over 50 cannabis companies. There's Filson, which is clothing and rugged gear. They were founded in 1897 and they supplied clothes for the gold rush. There's a neon company that started in 2004. And they do everything from regular neon signs to public art, to interior signs and exterior signs. And the owner now realized that there's no one teaching this skill. So he's actually created his own neon sign training program so that he can have his own pathway. And that's, you know, just that creative nature of manufacturing. There's also Washington Chain and Supply. They started in Soto in 1888 as scrap material. And now they have shifted over the years and changed hands, but they're chain manufacturing for the waterfront and the seaport. And they're located, they love being located in the manufacturing industrial center because they can supply the Port of Seattle as well as being near Ballard for all the ship fishing industries, to things like candles. So the manufacturing industry is very economically diverse. And there's, in your appendix, there's data that really has a lot of information. But there are great living wage jobs. And as we were talking about, we want to focus on getting black and brown folks and women into these industries so they can be successful. So in the data, it basically shows that there are more jobs in wider industries and on average, they get paid more. And there's fewer jobs in more diverse industries, but on average, they get paid less. So we want to try and change some of that. And overall, the manufacturing industry is 65% white compared to the total of King County, which is 66% white. So go ahead.
Director Lee, my favorite slide, it's not in this deck, but can you just summarize it? It compares the percentage of the growth, or the gross product of the city for manufacturing here to other cities. And we're, I mean, we are a manufacturing city, but it doesn't look like it by the numbers, right?
Yeah. No, what, so it's called a regional growth product, like GDP but regionally based. And one of the things that makes those data meaningful is when you actually look at multiple different points over time and look at the change. So certain industry within Seattle has really boomed in the last 15 years and became, it's really knowledge economy, high-tech. It has really become a dominant player in a way that is, it's so dominant, it's actually, it makes everybody else look small. So in the old days, in the manufacturing production economy, Boeing jobs were like the high numbers. But now the manufacturing numbers, they maintain relatively the same, but other industries have skyrocketed. Now they look small. So the behavior of the economy has really shifted over time in a way that's a little bit too disproportionate.
Right. And what was compelling to me about that particular side though is it compares Seattle to other cities. And if you have a vision of what a healthy economy is.
That's right.
It's across sectors, not heavily based in a particular sector.
Is that we're too dominant in one area and we need to balance it out. And manufacturing, because of the low barrier to entry issue, allows that inclusive economy agenda to be actualized if we can balance that part out a little bit more. But right now, it's a little bit too skewed in one area and that's part of concern. And that's actually creating the inequity.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So with the low barrier to entry and the meaning that there's lots of apprenticeships that Seattle Colleges already support, there's programs that you can get a welding certificate in six months. You don't have to have that bachelor's degree to be successful. And if you look at the wages here, the range is $44,000 to $182,000. And the average, you know, is, I mean, in that one company, even for the ones that above-average representation of color, it's $93,000 a year. So we talk about trying to get folks an awareness to get into jobs that create a career rather than just a job. This is one of them and we can't, we can't let that go. What OED is doing particularly in this arena is they're supporting AJAC, which is the Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee, Youth Apprenticeship. They've helped establish Building Sciences Program at South Seattle College. They've helped establish the Industry Industrial Manufacturing Academy. They've done, we, I guess, sorry, support Tri-Trade Programs, which we just talked about in manufacturing and building trades. They fund port jobs, which helps get jobs in the trades and the transportation logistics and aircraft manufacturing at the airport. Our port is, and our airport is one of the fastest-growing airports in the nation. Supporting the Harbor Island Welding Program that's co-located at Viger Shipyard. And that is a great example of a good public-private partnership that we would want to emulate. And that is a great example of a good public-private partnership that we would want to emulate in the future. Helping establish Diesel Mechanics Program at South Seattle College and helping establish a vehicle maintenance program at Shoreline Community College. So lots of good work in the manufacturing area. So the maritime industry is my bailiwick, obviously. There are six main sectors. So you've got boat building and ship repair and maintenance. So that's new construction of vessels as well as maintenance or repair. You've got the recreational boating, construction and recreational boating in general, which includes recreational marinas, retail boat dealers, waterborne, waterborne-like scenic sightseeing tours. Then you've got the commercial fishing industry and the seafood processing. There's, people don't realize, but 50% of the food, of the fish that's consumed in the United States, those ships are homeported right here at Fisherman's Terminal. So supporting, so supporting, yeah.
I knew that. Food service, food systems.
Then there's the maritime logistics and shipping, which is all of the deepwater and shallow-water port movement, inland freight, refrigerated warehouses, storage. This includes longshoremen, passenger vessel or passenger water transportation, which we all think of as just the Washington State ferries. But there's commuters with the walk-on ferries, the high-speed ferries, visitors, cruises and argosy, things like that. Then you also have the marine maritime support services, which are everything from environmental firms, naville architecture, construction firms, law, accounting, marine education services, et cetera. So the maritime industry is really, you have to think of it as an ecosystem because it all relies on one another. And if they have to, the ships and the vessels need the shipyards and the architects and the suppliers and the warehouses and the manufacturers all together supporting them. And we have this amazing history here and this natural deepwater port that most cities don't have. And we tend, I think the society as a whole in our community don't really realize that they're connected to the maritime industry. But if you eat fish, if you've taken a ferry, if you wear clothes, if you have electronics, you're connected to the maritime industry. So everybody is connected. So why it's important for us to, why do we care? Now, these are statistics for Washington, but the, Washington, the maritime industry in Washington is a $37.8 billion industry. It provides 69.5 direct jobs. The average wage of the maritime worker is 55 years old. So in the next 10 years, we're going to have a mass retirement, which will equal upward mobility. In fact, the Washington State ferries today, the folks that work on that, those boats, 50% of their workforce is eligible for retirement today. So we are reaching kind of a crisis mode here in Seattle as a state, as, honestly, as a nation. There's, if we were to deploy for a war, hopefully that wouldn't happen, but we are 8,000 mariners short to support a national deployment. So it's not just a Seattle problem or a Washington problem. There's, there's stuff going on everywhere. So supporting these living wage jobs, the average pay is about $67,000 a year. And we are the most trade-dependent state in the U.S. We are the gateway with this beautiful geographic natural port. So we, at OED, we've been supporting the Youth Maritime Collaborative, which this year is in coordination with Launch 206, which is an internship program from the Seattle School District. So we're hoping to get more internships from public-private partnerships with the maritime industry. They funded Seattle Goodwill's Youth Maritime Program, which started two years ago. They took their youth year-round program and made it into a maritime program for awareness and preparedness. And they brought me on board. So 30 years' experience and my connections, trying to get these employers, part of my job is to support them and getting the employers, we were just talking about, industry coming to the table with finances and helping. That's part of my job, is to talk to these folks and get them to the table so that we can start talking about what they need, including, well, I'll go in that in a second, but, you know, the pathways to success don't need a bachelor's degree. And these are two main industries in Seattle that have a long-term history that we can help get people, young people and adults into these jobs in a short amount of time. So one of the things we've been doing in this strategy is there, the mayor pulled together the Maritime and Industry Strategy Stakeholders Process. This is the actual location that we're talking about. So these are the manufacturing industrial centers. You'll notice that on the left-hand side, there are many regional centers of manufacturing or maritime, but we're just talking about these two specific places that are what's called the bin mic, which is Ballard Inner Bay, and then the Duwamish mic, which includes Soto, Georgetown and South Park. So the stakeholder group includes one citywide group and then four neighborhood groups. The four neighborhood groups are Georgetown, South Park, Ballard, Inner Bay and Soto. The citywide group will have seven different meetings. The neighbor, the four neighborhood groups will have four meetings each. And the, so far, we've had two sets of the neighborhood meetings in each neighborhood, and we've had three sets of meetings in the citywide group. And most of the issues that have come up, the dominant issues have been workforce issues. We need more people, more people need to know about these, they need skilled workforce, they need to diversify. Transportation issues, how do we get these workers that we need to the jobs in an effective, efficient manner? And from an environmental standpoint, how do we get less single-use cars on the road and we can get folks there to reduce emissions? Affordable workspace and housing. If people are going to be working, we have a lot of folks that work in this part of the industry or in middle-wage jobs that can't live in Seattle anymore. So we want to make sure that they can live and work in, potentially in the same place. There's public safety issues that are coming up, of course, with the homeless camper situations in the industrial areas, as well as pedestrian safety and infrastructure changes. And then environmental issues, particularly in South Park, have come up. And then land use is, is obviously the, the main issue that's going to be talked about and the horse trading that's going to have to happen. But that's not the whole process. The point was to try and make strategies that we can have middle-wage jobs, and land use is just a tool to help us do that. So the deliverables, it went from November through August. It'll go into the summer. There was a vision for the industrial and maritime lands, which is envisioning 10 to 15 years out in the future. One of the other deliverables is a neighborhood vision of how that neighborhood would want to see their maritime and manufacturing area. The principles, the mayor came up with five different principles that all of this work has been the lens that people have been looking through. Policies, they're going to be making recommendations on what policies and programs we could be doing to help support whatever this vision is. And then there's citywide actions and local actions that would happen in each of those neighborhoods. That's where we're at. We're happy to come back and give you an update once this is all finished up, but there's a lot more to do.
Great. So I have a few questions for you, a couple related to this, but before I get there, we've talked a little bit about the Workforce Development Council, and the previous slide also showed Tacoma. And so can you talk a little bit about the relationship to, with the port and especially this port partnership as it relates to workforce development?
Sure. So the port itself has an alliance with Tacoma. So it's called the Seaport Alliance. And they, they have that going on. I don't know exactly what, from the port's perspective, what they're doing with Seattle and Tacoma for workforce. The Port of Seattle definitely has a workforce development program and partnership. I'm hoping with me being on board, that I already have a relationship with the port, not that we didn't before, but I think that relationship will get stronger.
Great.
So that we can do some of that.
Councilmember, is there a particular issue you wanted us to follow up on?
Well, I just, I'm, as a new elected official, talking with the new port commissioner, and he is, Sam Cho is also very interested in economic development. So we've had some kind of offline conversations. I just didn't know if there was any sort of formal workforce development stuff happening.
And to go to Councilperson Herbert's comment about the high school. So I've been talking to Ryan Cawkins for a couple of years about that in my former role, and they are moving, moving forward. There is a potential for looking at that being located in South Park in collaboration with SPU. And we're working, Sasha and I have been working with SPU to see how we could help figure out some of that from a community perspective.
Okay. And then if, if you go to the, that industrial lands strategy.
Calendar.
The calendar, yeah. So I'm still trying to understand a little bit about how this is unfolding. But one thing that I noticed on this is the, for made, policy recommendations and EIS Can you, so my understanding about the EIS process is that it's related to a particular project, but I don't see any particular project identified there. So is that just kind of a placeholder or?
It is, they're, they're kind of doing the economic, or the EIS, they're beginning to pull together the things to, to do the EIS, kind of on the side, but they're waiting for us to get to that policy level and what some of the recommendations will be so that we can know, if we did nothing, here's what it would look like. If we did these things that you ask us to potentially do, what would it look like? So they're in the process of kind of gathering all that data. And this next step, in at least the neighborhood part, we are to the places where they're going to start proposing policies and program changes. And then in the city part, they're a little bit further behind that piece. So we're not quite on this timeline, but this is the, the most recent one. Doesn't answer your question fully, and I'm happy to give some more information.
Yeah, no, I just, this is talking a lot about policy, and the EIS, as I understand it, is about a particular, say, development project. And if nothing's been identified yet, I'm not sure what we're assessing.
Right, when we follow up with an email, the better.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that was great. Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
It, that's all you're doing?
Do you have any questions?
Okay. Do councilmembers have any other questions? Okay. So I do have lots of things I'm excited to follow up with you on, different programs, opportunities. Oh, so I did have one more question, which you started to talk about, and then I think I interrupted you. But what do you need? You were talking about, you know, at the, you had started talking about opportunities for upward mobility and Launch 206. And then you were starting to say, you know, what we could really use is, and then I interrupted you.
I don't remember what I was saying.
Okay.
But I could always say, you know, support to, support, get the industry to help us supporting. One of the things that's not happening particularly in manufacturing and maritime is making space for the next generation. And so I've been trying to do that in my role and other places, and getting people to offer these internships and to participate in the, the work that Sasha and the workforce team is, is doing with trying to get community service organizations and youth-serving organizations into the industries and the employers to help them be prepared, because they won't retain these folks if they don't know how to be with them. Because the maritime industry is inherently white male in this particular area. That is not true of the maritime industry as a whole, but it is here.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you all for your time and your information. I look forward to continuing to hear from you. And this, we have an open-door policy, so the, the open-ended question for me is, what can we do to support your work and to make sure that we're scaling these programs and supporting really the work you're doing to try to get people into good-paying jobs in the city? So if there are no further questions, then the committee, this concludes the February 27, 2020 Committee, and we are adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah.